Bills and manifests.
Sure.
Over there, you got those? All right. We're gonna not do the, we do have some non-public work to do, but we'll do it at the end, not in the beginning, so we'll skip over that for now and come back to it. So we'll start with opening public comment. Speaker. Go for it.
This is Karen.
John.
Hi, I'm Karen Breger, a parent of, in a week will be an eighth grade student. A group of eighth grade parents have gotten together and were anxious about planning for the eighth graders for next year, a trip, as well as whatever other end-of-year sort of activities. Having been involved with a prior class that had an amazing experience, partly because there was a strong parent group that got together well before the end of their seventh year, with the help of the staff in the building, we haven't quite gotten that connection with advisor yet to really begin that, but we'd like to get moving over the course of the summer and start with some fundraising activities. One of the keys to making sure that it's a great experience and every child gets the opportunity to go is funds, because there are a lot of students in the grade that can't afford this sort of trip on their own. So, I would like, I'm requesting, I'm requesting the board's approval to begin some fundraising activities over the summer regardless of whether there is or isn't an advisor. And I, this is a draft, this was not the final version, I had some technical challenges with my brain tonight and leaving them on. These are the fundraisers that we'd like to get started with. Some of them we'd like to start with over the summer. Some of them are things that would start planning and occur after school starts, but would like to at least get it in front of you now for approval. The first one is to sell Laker gear. There are companies that will help you set up an online storefront, and that you set up, you basically send them your logo, you pick whatever items you want and how you'd want them designed, and then you send a link out to whomever you want, and people can go online themselves and order what they want, and a percentage of that goes back to the nonprofit organization. And so it's something that we'd like to get started as soon as possible, there's minimal work involved with it. And then we would have the funds now going to the Class of 2018 Activity Fund, but it's something we'd like to keep in place for the school for years to come, you know, potentially with future funds going to the future, the eighth grade classes of the future. And Mary Bulger has, one of the parents has done a lot of work, a lot of research on this, and she has a company that we just need to go ahead to get started, and we could begin that right away. It'd be nice from a community standpoint, too, to, there's a lot of people that would like water bottles or sweatshirts or whatever, and I think it's a way for the school community to come together and show some of that Laker pride. The second one is a car wash. JMB Auto has offered the use of their facilities, we've used this before for other school fundraisers. Just basic, you know, collect the money, and again, all proceeds would go to the Class of 2018 Activity Fund. The third one is a GoFundMe page, very simple, you set up through GoFundMe, send out the link, people can make donations, you can send it out to grandparents or whomever, and we would keep that open and active throughout the year to continue to collect funds, again, all going to the Class of 2018 Activity Fund. The fourth one is a prize calendar. This is something that the class, not this current year, but the year before, had done and was extremely successful, basically solicit donations from, or companies, services, goods, gift cards, that sort of thing. It's a 30-day calendar, every day gets us whatever, an item that's been donated, you sell the tickets for $10 or $20, and then you do the raffle and raffle off that prize every day. Depending on the donations we get, I think could dictate what we charge, but I believe the class that did this before charged $10, and they raised quite a bit of money. Savers. This is something that, you may be familiar with N68 Hours of Hunger. That organization has held two Savers drives. They have approval with Savers to do a total of four, and they're not gonna do the last two that they have approved, so they have offered to give those, that opportunity to the Class of 2018. The woman who has been running this for N68 Hours of Hunger also happens to be a parent of a soon-to-be eighth grade student, and she's willing to do this as she's done for Savers. Basically, you collect items for donation, you deliver those to Savers, and depends on the type of goods, but you get up to 50 cents per pound for the item, and yet, again, all that money would go to the Class of 2018. And then the last one is the Holly Fair. Some of you who've been around may remember Holly Fairs of years past, this is an activity that had always been run by the PTA. It's something that's been held in the cafeteria, vendors come in, it's a lot of the Girl Scout troops, things like that, have come in, set up a table, sold their wares, and it happens in December before Christmas time. PTA is not doing it, they haven't done it, I think, in probably the last two or three years. They, we, if we did it, we would set it up where we would actually charge vendors $25 per, for a table. That $25 gives them the opportunity to be at the Holly Fair to sell their wares. We would also request a donation from them, one of whatever it is they're selling that we could use as a raffle item, and so another way to earn money at this fair, in addition to the $25 for the table, would be to sell raffle tickets to raffle off the items that have been donated from the vendors. That would, something that we would look to start planning, once everybody's back at school, because it's something that would happen early December. We'd have to coordinate dates, because Co-Brown does a fair, we don't wanna interfere with some of the other fairs that happen in the area, but the Co-Brown Fair, if anybody who's been or is familiar with that, they have a waiting list every year of vendors that want to attend. Obviously, we're limited based on the space, so we'd have to figure out table space, and we'd have to work with Mr. Tom, I guess, on that, but those are the things we'd like to get approval for now, and hoping we can get that tonight.
Thanks. If you don't mind, well, if the board doesn't have any objection, we can finish the public comment and then bring up the.
Perfect. One other thing, not related to this, I know that you got your two or three-minute limit. I just wanted to thank everybody again, I know last time I was here, I thanked, it was when the children presented the STEM projects that they were doing. Tonight was the last night of that program, and I can't tell you how excited the kids have been, what a great job. If you remember the robot, they had to pick their pens up and put it down, they now have another piece of equipment and they programmed it so they don't have to pick the pens up, it does it all on its own. That was the most exciting thing for them. Mr. Robert, Mr. Lever, did an amazing job, they had, they had donuts or whatever and soda, and they gave the kids all a t-shirt, and it was just such a really amazing, fun experience for everybody, so thank you for that, and if you would, if you could please pass the thank you along to both of those gentlemen for the work they did with that, it was really awesome.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I do. Logan. I'm here to, I'd like to ask another question about the budgeting process last year, but I wanted to start by reiterating my request that I made at the last meeting, when I asked that the board discuss the error that I asked about on the food service line. It was in an amount of about $30,000, and caused the default budget, I think, to have been elevated by about that much over what it ought to have been. I think it's important, you know, I'm addressing you as my elected representatives here, I think it is important that the, that that kind of problem be discussed publicly, because unless it is, I'm just concerned that there's no way of knowing that that kind of error, those kinds of errors aren't gonna wind up being approved again in the future. And on the other hand, if I am wrong, I would welcome correction about that. The other issue I wanted to bring up tonight with the formulation of the default budget for this year is on the salary line for guidance in the default budget, as it was formulated for this year. As I understand it, the board was advised by the School Boards Association that the default budget need not be adjusted down to account for a change in personnel, so the salary amount on the guidance line was set at $103,000, even though the expected contractual obligation for the actual people who are in place this year, the guidance personnel, was going to be $78,000, and that's a difference of about $25,000. Now, meanwhile, in the 2016-17 default budget, the board seemed to have believed that it could raise the default budget by several thousand dollars to accommodate a salary on that very same line that was more than had been budgeted for. So the default budget was raised in one instance, but then not lowered in this other instance. And my question is, you know, if the default budget is going to be adjusted up to account for contractual obligations to teachers who are expected to be on the staff in the following year, should it not also be adjusted down when there are known personnel changes that are expected to lower the cost? Or if it doesn't adjust for lowered costs, should it not adjust either for increased costs? In other words, it seems to me like we're having it both ways. If the contractual obligation raises your cost, you have a different person in place, different personnel in place, and their salaries are higher, the default budget can be raised, but if you have different people in place whose salaries are lower, the default budget should not be lowered? That's my question.
Yeah, it's not, that's not my understanding of how it works, I'd have to refer to the, to the RSA on that, but.
Well, I'm just looking at, at the numbers on one particular line, on that guidance salary line for the 16-17 default budget and the 17-18 default budget, and watching it having been raised in one case to accommodate a personnel situation, and lowered in the other likewise, not lowered in the other.
I would have to refer to the RSA just to answer the question, but, but, from what I remember about it, and I, don't quote me, because I could be wrong about this, the default budget is calculated by taking the previous year's bottom-line budget, right? Bottom-line number, adding any increases for contractual obligations, and decreasing it for any one-time payments, or I forget how that's worded, but.
Expenses.
Was it one-time expenses? So by law, that's how it's, how it's calculated.
Yes, I'm familiar with the statute.
The states, the forms that we send to the state, I think, only have that kind of information on it. The default budget that the S U develops, with the lines and all that stuff, is not, I don't even think we're required to do that. I think it's, it's more of a worksheet for us than it is for that. That's my understanding of it, and I could be wrong, and I could be misquoting the law, but, you know, when you say that it goes up, it goes up because of contractual obligations, that's, that's how it's supposed to be. And when it goes down, it goes down because of one-time expenses that were in that year that aren't carried over. So whether it comes from food service or any other line, and that's kind of all irrelevant, because it's the bottom line of the budget with those adjustments is how it's calculated. My understanding, you can tell me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but.
No, your, your explanation's good. I'm just having a hard time following, I wasn't here at the last meeting.
Okay.
So I'm having a hard time following the question, and I don't think during public comments a great way for me to explain that.
Yes. Yep.
He's looking at me, and I wasn't here either, so we're both kind of like, we don't know.
Mrs. Fayella, if I, if, I'll make a recommendation to the, to the board, could we have Mrs. Fayella and Marjorie and I go over her concern and then come back to the board with.
Absolutely.
Would that make sense? So will you come and see us?
I'd be happy to do that.
I know how to get in touch with you.
Excuse me?
I know how to get in touch with you, so I will have somebody call and schedule some time. It might not be until the beginning of July, just because the end of the school year and vacations, but we'll sit down and I'll have copies of the budgets and I can look, and then hopefully help answer your question.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any comment from the board? Going, gone, all right. Close the public comment session. As I said, I'd like maybe, I'd like to propose that we start off by addressing the fundraiser requests that came in. Does anyone have any objection to that?
It's open for discussion.
Yeah, so, well, it's, all right, we can make a motion to, I'll make a motion to approve the fundraiser requests as presented by Ms. Breger. Second?
Second.
Second, all right, so discussion.
I guess this question's for Ms. Young, is there anyone that's in the pipeline for the 2017-18 year for eighth grade advisor yet?
Yes. I have two people who are interested, and none of this has been discussed with that person yet.
No, it's not official.
Okay.
Would they, would they start that position at the beginning of the school year, or would they start now?
My guess is they would start over the summer, I just wanna be sensitive to the fact that my staff is really tired from just getting back from Boston and all the end-of-year activities, so I don't wanna ask them to do something immediately, but I think that once they've had a little time to rejuvenate, that they would be interested in doing some activities over the summer.
So looking at some of these, you know, I, I, these are just my opinions on them, something like the Laker gear, does that really need an advisor? As, I mean, that doesn't need an advisor as, I mean, I would say an advisor, okay, or you're okay, but it's not like the advisor has to put time into that.
I don't know, I've not done this before, my guess is that it wouldn't be a lot of time, but there might be some.
You know, 'cause like the GoFundMe, the Laker gear, and the Savers, those three things I was looking at, and those look, to me, like, they're not really things, because they're, they're things that can be set up online and, and, like, almost like a donated type thing, like, like with the Savers, the donations come in, Sarah can get the check and then donate it that way.
So, we, I, there's a really active parent group, a small group, and we've just gotten started, just started a Facebook page and sent, you may, some may have seen, we sent a note out to all the eighth grade families to inform them of that. The intent is that this parent group is willing to take on the work, any and all of the work, so as not to put excessive burden on an advisor, whether there's one or two or none. The parents are prepared to take on all of it and do all of it, and get the checks made out to the Class of 2018 Activity Fund, and turn that to Marjorie or whomever, or Joyce in the office, whoever it goes. So I thank you for asking that question, you know, I'm not sure what others are thinking on it, but our request is.
Policy states that there has to be.
Does it?
Staff member, yes, it says. The recommendation of the principal and the specific consent, uh, da-da-da, uh, or is it fundraising events, maybe, be led by parent volunteers, but must have a school staff member in attendance after the activity has been approved by the school board.
So most of those aren't activities that would be, except for a car wash, right? Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, about, and the Holly Fair, which is when school starts. So that's what I would, that's what I was asking her about.
Yeah, no, thank you, I appreciate that.
Because that's what the policy specifically states, is that there has to be a representative there.
Right, so, I mean, could we approve these?
I have a question about the Laker gear one.
Just one, just one second.
For the outside company, it doesn't have a name on it.
Yeah, I apologize, as I said, that was not the final version. I actually, I don't know that I have the name of a company, Mary Bulger's the person who is going to be managing that.
My question is about the percentage that the company retains, do you know?
I don't have that detail.
I was just, yeah, what percentage goes to the company and what percentage goes to the company.
I don't have that detail. I would say that there is no cost to us to, to do that, so anything you get is bonus.
Any other discussion?
The only concern I have, and frankly, I would like personally to see some, a legal opinion, is the Laker gear essentially belongs to the entire school. I'm not sure we have the right to lay it off to just one class. If we do, then I don't have a problem with that, but, I mean, if you think about it as a business, I'm not sure that that's quite correct, you know, if, because the Laker gear belongs to the whole school, not just the eighth grade class.
Right, it's my understanding, we don't have Laker gear right now, though, right? I mean, we would be kind of inventing it.
Well, no, the Laker emblem, the Laker emblem, so if it was the Boston Red Sox, and you all decided to sell Boston Red Sox trees, even though they don't do it now, I think the Boston Red Sox would have an issue, is my point, and I'm, I'm not sure I'm right or wrong, I'm just saying that it seems like we should, you know, would the sixth-grade class have a right to complain that the Laker gear money is going to the eighth-grade class? And it's just a simple question that we could ask, you know.
That's a good point.
That's my only problem, and if it's not a problem, then I'm more than in favor of it. So my personal opinion is we ought to approve all the others, and get some more information that's not available tonight, and get a legal opinion, but that's just my, what I think should happen.
That is a good point, because if we, thinking down the line, if we start that now, and then the eighth grade does graduate, and people are still buying Laker gear, then what are we gonna do with those proceeds?
So our, our proposal was that, that it be handed down to eighth-grade class after eighth-grade class after eighth-grade class, knowing that that's a class year that every year is trying to do a bigger trip than, than a one-day field trip, so the idea was to start it now, that this, the 2017-2018 eighth-grade class would benefit, and then once they move on, it goes to the year behind them, and then the year behind them, and so on, and could go on indefinitely. That, that's the proposal.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So my concern is that we're not following the policy. The policy states that the fundraising for school-sponsored events requires the recommendation of the principal. She, I'm assuming this is the first time, and I'm not putting you on the spot, you don't have to answer, this is the first time that Jocelyn is seeing them, she's not bringing them forward, this parent group is, and I'm not saying no to them, I think they're wonderful ideas, but we're not following the policy, which is something that Tim has been bringing up from day one, that we're not following the policy. I would rather see this be put off for two weeks and brought back to the next board meeting, after we have an eighth-grade advisor in place, so that we're not stepping on toes, and Jocelyn can look into these or make a recommendation if she feels comfortable with them.
Can you, can you read me the policy, please?
All fundraising for school-sponsored events require the recommendation of the principal and the specific consent of the school board. No money collections of any kind may be held in the school without the recommendation of the principal and the specific consent of the school board. Fundraising events may be led by parent volunteers, but must have a school staff member in attendance after the activity has been approved by the school board. All monies acquired through fundraising must be deposited into the appropriate Student Activity Fund for which the money worth, monies were raised. At no time should any monies be kept in personal outside-of-school accounts.
Thank you. Ms. Young, do you have a recommendation?
So I, to be clear, Mary Bulger did approach me and let me know that the parent meeting was happening, she did ask about bringing them forward tonight, I said either I could do it or the parent representative could do it. I am happy to recommend from the car wash down and leave the Laker gear one to the legal opinion piece, if you're willing to take my on-the-spot recommendation.
Great, thank you.
So we do have a policy, it seems like we should approve it from the car wash down pending the appointment of a advisor.
Do you wanna?
And follow policy.
Amend your motion?
Yeah, I'll amend my motion to approve from the car wash down, following policy. So, policy as to when an advisor needs to be there and such. Okay with that? Second?
Second.
Seconded that, all right. Any further discussion on the amended motion? You got all that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? What motion carries?
So under all business, we'll put Class of 2018 Laker gear on the next agenda.
Thank you.
You understood my concern?
I'll follow through with it. I don't think it's gonna be an issue, because you're doing subsequent years, but I'll follow through.
And that's fine.
Okay. All right, moving on, we have board minutes to approve, I believe in our packet, we have pages three, two, seven is our strategic planning workshop, I don't think we need to approve those, there's in there for information. Starting on page eight, we have the public session minutes from June 1st.
June 1st, public session minutes. Second.
Any discussion on these?
On line 282, it says that we awarded the bid to somebody, but didn't we have the discussion, and it was that we did it for the amount?
That's correct.
And doc, and for Mr. Tom to choose which scrubber it was going to be.
Mm-hmm.
And if, probably the amount was something like $5,200.
$5,200.
Yeah. Up to, up to, up to $5,200.
Oh, my, my, sorry.
Do you keep turning your notes?
I did not even touch that, it was Shane.
I'm watching you. Keep on yelling at me.
That's the second time it's happened with you.
Really? I do not even go near it, I swear.
Those pesky books.
Any other questions?
On line 323, it says, where was it, 323, there are no funds for repair of the door or camera, the doors were already repaired, is my understanding, correct?
No, they haven't been repaired yet. I thought that we had the money.
We had the money in the budget to repair them.
Okay, so the money was in there for those, okay.
So that's why I say there's no funds for the camera.
Yeah.
Right, no budgeted funds for the camera.
Which we decided to use.
Later on.
The surplus funds for that.
Yeah. I do have something as well, I, I don't know, I don't remember exactly where in the conversation it was, but at some point in the Fresh Picks discussion, we did have some discussion about the Wellness Committee getting together with Fresh Picks to take a look at those policies and, I, I was just looking at it and I didn't see it, so, yeah, just like to add that in there.
Call the.
Yep. Any other corrections or comments on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, no, any, all right, motion carries. I think we also have non-public minutes, do we?
Yeah. Motion to approve non, oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, they're starting, starting on page 16.
Non-public minutes from June 1st.
Second.
Any discussion on these? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to the Business Ministers' Report, please.
Sorry.
Wake up.
Good evening.
It's not that boring.
No, I missed my afternoon cup of coffee. My report begins on page 18. Nothing really is changing or moving too much at this point in regards to the financials. We are still anticipating a $10,000 to $15,000 shortfall with Medicaid revenue, and Scott and I went over that again this morning, and it's changed by what's presented in here because of the funds that we have received since then, so now, if you're looking at your Medicaid reimbursements on page one of the revenue report, that is down to about $29,000, $28,000, and we will still be receiving money through June and into the beginning of July for June. So we're still anticipating that loss at this point. We've been working on closing out purchase orders since March or April, so the financials are looking clean. Your final payrolls for the year will be next week, so we'll be looking for signatures. We, I believe we need, I can't remember, are we doing one or two payrolls? Two?
Choose D1, the big one, and then pay.
Yeah. So in the teacher's contract, the teachers get paid on their last day, so their last paycheck will be on Tuesday, and then we'll have our regular payrolls for the hourly people in administration that will be paid out on Friday. So at that point, we will be looking for signatures at some point. And then, other than that, I'm not sure if you had any specific line questions in regards to the financials, but the bottom line right now for unanticipated, unexpended funds is $147.
I have one question on the very first line of the district assessment, just explain me what's going on.
Yep, so we, so we receive money from the town, the treasurer works with the town, and we will receive that money before the end of the year.
I just have it coming in.
Non-money?
Yep. See?
I was wondering if it got held back, because we're gonna be giving some back, so you kind of figured that out, so.
No, we work with them.
I'll come this way, and then I'll go back.
June's typically a tough month for them, as taxes are coming in and everything like that, so we, you know, we just try to work with them and try to see what we can do. And I know our treasurers are pretty much on top of that. I do touch base with them in May and June, kind of looking at it, like some of them will have like a million dollars that is still due at this point, and I'll double check with them, we're gonna get this before the end of June, and they'll reassure me we are, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any questions on the financials?
At the last meeting, there was a question about repairing the hose on the scrubber, and I think the question was kind of like, when are we gonna stop repairing the old scrubber? The old scrubber is not in use at all. We don't, it's not being used at all until we get a new one. That repair was made on your new scrubber, that is not covered under warranty. So, that's what that hose repair was for.
What?
That's what I was, that's what I was told, huh? I don't remember how much it was, the question was just.
How many scrubbers, how many scrubbers are we talking about?
You have, you have two.
So.
You have one upstairs, I believe, and one downstairs.
There's a bill for a new scrubber in the last, two weeks ago's manifest. It's thousands, several thousand dollars.
For the, for the one we approved, you mean?
For the scrubber?
Yeah, $5,200.
$5,200. So, my question was, on the scrubber that we're replacing.
Mm-hmm.
What are we doing, so now apparently there's three scrubbers in question, we've got one upstairs, one downstairs, and we're replacing one, is that right?
You have two, you have one.
Replacing one of those two?
Yes.
Okay, where's the extra scrubber gonna go?
The old one.
The old one.
That we're replacing.
Is the question, what I wanted to know. My concern was, if you looked at the bills over the last, the last two cycles, we've paid a lot of money for some scrubber, whether it's the newer one or the old one, so, and I don't wanna keep spending money on scrubbers if, you know, we're buying a new one. So, it, you know, sometimes when you have an old car, you're better off just to get rid of the darn thing, and not try to keep it, because it nickels and dimes you to death. And it seemed like that that's what's going on with the old scrubber, which I'm assuming we're replacing with a new scrubber.
The old scrubber's not being used, is from what I understand. So, right now, you only have one scrubber being used.
So, then we're back to my question, what are we going to do with the, what you called old scrubber that is not being used?
It's dead, you said.
It's dead, it's non-functioning, so.
I appreciate that, what are we gonna do with it? And I know that's not.
Dispose of it.
Your job, you know, I, did we recently spend money on that particular scrubber? I think we did.
No, I think she said that she, on the newest.
Last, there's scrubber bills a month ago, and scrubber bills two weeks ago, and they're all on what we're calling the good scrubber?
The newest scrubber.
On the middle-aged scrubber.
The middle-aged scrubber.
Right, the middle-aged.
I mean, there were some pretty hefty bills.
Because I called Tom and I asked him about it, and I, and my first question was, you know, it's not under warranty, and he said, no, because I think it's like over a year old, or those parts under.
I wasn't looking for warranty, I was just.
I was, it's a newer scrubber.
I mean, I just don't want an extra scrubber hanging around for somebody to say, oh, we can spend $1,000 and fix that up.
Well, maybe because the older scrubber hasn't been working, and it's the, middle-aged is double the action, it's going up and downstairs, and.
Exactly.
So. We have an elevator, or two or three.
Yeah, I know, I'm by, it's using both, doing both floors.
And then.
I wrote that question down.
And then, so are we good with that? Or do you want me to analyze the bills that we've been spending?
I'd still like to know.
He still wants to know where the old scrubber's going, so we'll just combine.
Are we gonna sit on that for?
Under all business, we'll put old.
And I really don't think that's your question, Marjorie, to be honest with you, although if you wanna.
Well, no, but it needs, it needs to be disposed of properly, so.
Just gotta go to Scrub Junkyard.
Maybe we can get money for it.
Scrubbing.
Yeah.
Well, and that was my point, two weeks ago, I mean, if it's a scrubber, and I assumed it was usable, just needed to be replaced, then could we put it on Craigslist and get $100 for it, that we can donate to the eighth grade field trip?
Yep, and I know we've done that in the past.
Yeah, you know, that's really what I wanted to do, what has happened to it, and can we make a few pennies that can go somewhere?
Sorry, so, finishing one thought, starting another, it was also requested that a bid for the stairs come back, so we originally gave you guys a bid, I want to say about a month, month and a half ago. And then, it was asked that we go out to bid, and we went out to bid, and we didn't get any responses. So, here is the original quote, I did.
Is this just for the bubble gum hallway ones?
Yeah. So, well, this has both of them on top of it, but, so we went and had.
I got a whole ton of them.
Do you have a ton of them, too?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Just making sure I have the right ones.
So, basically, we contacted, did you get one?
No.
We contacted the gentleman, and asked him if this quote was still valid, and he said yes.
Can you start work before June 1? At July 1?
At June 1. That I'm not sure.
Can you start before June 1?
Not sure.
That I'm not sure. So, what I would do, looking at this, is to me, the side steps, that to me is the bubble gum hallway, and we're ignoring the front entry. So, it'd be the 2120 plus the 725.
Cut and expansion joint from stairs to retaining wall. I have no idea what that means.
And I'm not absolutely positive about that stain concrete, I'm not sure if that goes with the front entryway, or if it goes with here, but if we were gonna approve it, I was just gonna ask that.
You're staining steps and entry.
Okay.
So, that's.
I was.
But I was thinking to blend colors, I didn't understand why we would be blending colors outside. I would think we'd be blending the colors to match the bubble gum hallway.
No, that, that walkway out there is like three different colors, that's probably what he means, maybe.
What's wrong with that?
Nothing.
I'm just.
That's probably what he means. I've honestly never looked at those stairways out there.
Looking for approval of these funds, so you can get out of surplus, or is this, you're not, okay, these are just information.
You would ask for a quote, I think, because I think it was important to get the bubble gum hallway repaired.
Yep.
So, if that's what you wanna do, then yes, I would be asking for your approval for the $2,120.
Plus the 725?
If needed.
If needed, yeah.
Motion to approve $2,120 to fix the bubble gum hallway steps with an additional 725, if needed, to stain the concrete and blend the colors.
Seconded that.
These were the ones that were hazard, right? The bubble gum hallway?
I don't know, I have, I have no clue, none whatsoever.
That the bubble gum hallway ones were.
I have no clue.
I thought you said that.
No. I have not seen these, don't know anything about it.
Yeah.
The bubble gum hallway, we've had this discussion the last two meetings.
We've had a discussion, that doesn't mean that any of us have seen them.
Oh, well.
Last facilities committee we did around the table in Mrs. Young's office.
Oh, I see what you mean.
So.
As I recall.
I've been out there before, and, I mean, they are falling apart, and they need to be replaced.
Well, why don't we all get up and walk out and go look at them?
We could do that.
Mary, can you come with us? I wanna see your camera. I'll go look at them.
All right, we're back on, let's continue. Discussion assessment about the stairs.
I don't think we should spend the money, at this point, you know, but I think we should go on our, what is the thing we call at the end of our packet?
The, the parking lot.
Parking lot. I don't think we should ignore it, I think we need to keep it in our mind.
And send out the bids earlier, next year, to find out our total replacement cost.
To be replaced, not repaired, that's the bottom line.
This is a Band-Aid, and I don't think that's a good spending of money.
Yeah, $2,100 for a Band-Aid as well.
You're on board with that, too?
Yeah.
So, can we make a note, put that in the parking lot, please?
Withdraw the motion, should we vote it down?
Yeah, we can.
No, just vote it down.
We'll vote it down.
Scott.
What?
Yeah?
You got, I just want, am I supposed to do that for the north one, too?
All right, so, all in favor of repairing the stairs? All opposed?
Aye.
Motion fails. Be honest with me.
Do you have a timeframe?
Timeframe for?
Well, in your parking lot, you got items, I put bubble gum hallway steps.
Right.
And also, can you put on the front steps, too? Because there is the front entry pressure wash, cut and expansion joint.
Yes, you weren't here, I said I'm sick of hearing about that, that's like the third year in a row we've talked about that front, that front needs to be redone, too.
Yeah, so, what we did, yeah, well, we had that bid that went out to those three people, and they never came back, so, we need to put that out again early next year, so they, so we can get.
Should we do it early next year, or just do it over the summer? If we get that repaired, well, kids aren't here, wouldn't that be better?
It's gonna be an expensive job, it's gonna be more than.
I guess the question is, are we going to put it in our budget for the following year, or are we going to try to use surplus? That depends on.
You're looking at a $20,000 job.
I guess looking at March, March, April, April, if we look at it.
So, when we're doing our budget?
Yeah.
Well, wait.
If we're doing it for our budget, then we need to look at it November.
No, if you're doing it for your budget, you wanna talk about November.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a 20, $20 to $30,000 job.
Yep.
In fact, I'm gonna back you up and say, let's go.
August.
You wanna have the number in your budget by November, so you need to be going out to bid in like September.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, anything else?
Not your.
Cause enough damage so far already.
Well, before causing more damage, I don't know.
You are not boring at all.
I don't know if I'm supposed to say the next thing or not.
Go for it.
No, no.
No, I'll do that, not.
See, that's what I was afraid of, I didn't know if it was a non-public.
Wow, we're getting good.
So, you're done?
I'm done.
Great.
So, you put those in what section?
Parking lot.
I put them in the parking lot for September, and we're gonna go out to bid in September.
But the parking lot just stays there until we either take it out or resolve.
Right, it gives me a timeline, though, it gives me a note saying, hey, we gotta do this in September, for Marjorie.
Parking lot was a great invention, whoever came up with that was.
I did that with that person sitting in the audience right there.
Do we have any other?
Not paying attention to us.
Any other questions for our business administrator? No. Okay, moving on to the.
Sorry about that.
Festival support.
Good evening. So, first, I wanna start off passing around a thank you card from Mrs. Magnusson's kindergarten to thank the board for helping fund transportation to York's Wild Animal Kingdom.
I love that place.
We have been super busy around here lately, just a few highlights, last Friday, we had field day, we did things a little bit differently this year, we had classes travel as homerooms, and stay in sort of a one designated area, so we had the younger kids in one area rotating through stations, and the older kids in another area. The weather cooperated, we had to come in a few minutes early and have popsicles inside, but other than that, it was a fantastic day. Had a lot of positive feedback from both kids and staff, that it was one of the best field days ever. So, I really wanna thank all of the volunteers and members of the PTA who helped out with that. Also, wanna thank the wellness committee who planned that, but I will say that the heavy lifting was really done in terms of planning by Sarah Rothaus and Chelsea Tyler, so, big shout out to them for all their hard work on that. This past Monday, we had our sports awards, Tuesday, we had a fantastic concert from band and glee club, we have lots of kids going out on field trips, we have two grades going out tomorrow, so there's a lot of good stuff going around. Of course, graduation is tomorrow night, I encourage everybody to attend. I wanna congratulate our top three scholars of the class of 2017, Darren Sweet is our high honors student, Porter Higis is our salutatorian, and Brenna Roy is our valedictorian, so congratulations to those kids. Also, wanted to announce our marshals and ushers, this one out in the Laker last Friday, our marshals are Eva Roy and Skyloto, and our ushers for graduation will be Alex Qualia, Parker Tatum, Megan Breger, and Annie Toms, so congratulations to them as well. We will be spending quite a bit of time practicing tomorrow, so that we hope to put on a smooth and efficient ceremony tomorrow night. One question I do have for the board is who you would like to present the Andy Strout Award, I do have a staff member who is eager to do it, and willing, but obviously, it's a school board award, so if a member of the board wanted to do it.
I certainly wouldn't mind doing it, I'd like to do it, I guess, if it's a school board award.
Okay.
We could talk, I guess, offline about that.
Okay, that answers that question.
And I don't mind doing it either, I'd just like to know more about the award itself.
Did you find any information about that?
So, I had shared a blurb with you for the two nominees a few weeks ago, I can reproduce that for you if you would like.
But that's all, that's, I mean, I can find that, but that's all we really know about this award, is that it's just.
Yeah, I mean.
I'm just thinking, the one thing, too, is that, and I don't mind doing it, but I wanna make sure that the part that we do in it is short and sweet, because the, you know, the eighth grade graduation, I think it's gotten a little out of hand, and my son's graduating, so, you know, but I think it's gotten really out of hand with the amount of speeches and everything that we do, so whoever does it, short and sweet.
It's a special moment.
Absolutely, but, you know, I did this when I was in eighth grade, and it didn't take two and a half, three hours, so, just short and sweet.
I think on the award, just get offline on that, and just talk about, yeah, we'll get offline.
Okay.
You don't know about the award?
Yeah.
I have information. Okay.
Sure, sure.
Okay, so, and I only know this because I received the award when I came here, so this is how I know about it. But the Andy, Anne Strout Award was basically a woman in town who really did lots of community service with what is now the Masonic Hall, which is, she did plays, she did, I think it was an AIDS quilt that was at the old SAU building, she was a real, real value to the town, did lots of drama productions down at the, so she really led all that for many years, and I don't know if that's, and, oh, is that, am I getting it confused? I do know, okay, so, but I do know then, it was basically all community-based, though, so, I'm confusing my lady who it was.
Anne Strout was the realtor, right?
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'm confusing her role, but the whole thing was all about community, like, so it was basically how much effort you did in the community, and what you did to basically involve yourself in the community, so that was basically, like, so I'm getting the Anne White and Anne Strout messed up, but that's the gist of the award, so all community-based, and putting yourself out there, so, but I, you can look her up, I know, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think she was a former school board member, too.
I'd heard that as well. Okay, thank you.
Okay, next, um, we had talked about the smart board for the new kindergarten classroom, um, a month or so ago. And Barbie had asked about the possibility of moving one of the existing smart boards from a room that will not have a class in it next year. Uh, Mr. Robert does not recommend that. They're pretty delicate and expensive items. He's concerned about possibly damaging it. It's also quite an undertaking, is my understanding, to disassemble them or take them down, move them, and then get them back up. Also, given that we have big class sizes coming through, we're gonna have to buy one pretty soon anyway. Um, and we do have the money in the technology function. It's not all in one line. So we would have to over expend a line, but there is money that is available in the other lines. So that is one thing for the board to consider tonight, is whether we wanna approve that or not. Obviously, we have a pretty quick turnaround time here to get it ordered. So, um, a decision on that tonight would be appreciated. Um, also just wanted to give you a heads up on summer curriculum work. Our current curriculum director recommends that we start thinking about developing a standards-based report card in the seventeen, eighteen school year for implementation in the eighteen, nineteen school year. That work would start this summer. It would, it would take the whole year to, to get it through, um, and get it done. Um, and then also to inform parents about it. But we have so far, I've put out some feelers. We have three teachers so far in grades one, two, and five. Um, I'd obviously like some representation from older grade levels. So that would be starting this summer at thirty dollars an hour, so we're looking at about thirty seven fifty. Once you include FICA and retirement, um, there is five thousand dollars in the curriculum development line that would pay for this work. Hiring update. We have been interviewing like crazy. We have identified a physical education and health teacher. We are still working on the curriculum director. We're all set with E S Y. Yesterday, we had a really fun but busy day. We had four candidates for the elementary positions come in and do demonstration lessons, um, in second grade and third grade. It's great when you can time it right and have prospective teachers come in and you can actually see them in their element. So we have identified two strong candidates, and Adrian and I will begin the process of checking references tomorrow. We are all set for our E S Y neck tutor position, um, and we are still looking for a full-time custodian. I feel like I need to get that tattooed on my arm or something. We're also looking for a speech and language pathologist. That position, um, the posting closes today, so I'll start reviewing applications next week and convene an interview committee. And we're looking for, um, a middle school or a, a summer school teacher who will help with sort of the credit recovery piece of grade six, seven, and eight for kids who are failing classes at the end of fourth quarter, um, so that they can make up that grade and be eligible for fall extracurriculars. So we're doing some hiring. Okay, and then Spanish. We had talked about this about a month ago. As we had talked about, we have smaller class sizes moving into grade seven. So making three classes, three sections out of seventh grade that has thirty seven students next year, um, did not seem like the best use of our resources. So we had proposed moving, um, two positions down to the older grades that were experiencing bigger class sizes. This would make five groups of seventh and eighth graders with five core classes of ELA, math, science, social studies, and Spanish. This would be a change. Right now, we have certain students who take Spanish. Generally, it's the kids who do not require an academic intervention, so it's not available to all students. It's not equitable right now. So transitioning to everybody taking Spanish certainly presents a challenge in that you're going to have some kids who had a year or more of Spanish under their belt and some kids who have not taken Spanish at all. That is primarily a challenge for next year. Um, and then once we get through next year, it's really not an issue anymore. So we have a transition year ahead of us. So what we're looking at is a need for differentiation, which in a K through eight public school, we have to do all the time anyway. So in every grade level and every subject area, we have students who have a wide range of instructional levels who need different supports and instruction. So in that case, Spanish won't be any different. The, the teacher's gonna have to work hard with the support of the rest of her team, with the curriculum director, to figure that out, and we're in the process of doing that. So there is a challenge. I also think there's a real benefit. I think it's a real opportunity for the students of Northwood to, to leave our school having had two years of Spanish. And for sixth graders, they'll have it as a related art, so they won't have it every day, um, but they'll have it once a week as a related art. This year, we had a hundred percent of our students qualify, test into Spanish two for Co Brown for next year, which is again, um, a real boon for us. Do I expect that we'll continue to have a little percent of students? Probably not next year. Do I expect that we'll continue to have a high percentage of students qualify for Spanish two? Yes. We're, you know, one of the things we're looking at is not only differentiating instruction, but looking at assessments to make sure that our kids are all making progress, that it's not just the kids that are coming in brand new that are making progress, but all kids are making progress. So some of the things we're exploring are, you know, regular formative assessments that we would do anyway, plus some more formal summative assessments, including like a midterm, a final, um, some sort of placement, you know, practice placement test before the kids actually take the CBNA placement test. We're also exploring the option of V-Lax to supplement. So for example, kids could take their core instruction with Ms. Bedling and then use V-Lax during the wind block or something so that they could have enrichment, um, above and beyond what they're getting in the classroom. Um, and then this year, we had opted not to take the national Spanish exam, um, mostly because the feedback we had gotten from Co Brown was that they didn't really use that information. After we got that feedback from Co Brown, we found out that, no, they don't use that information, but it's nice to have. The kids enjoy sort of the prestige of, of taking the exam. The parents enjoy knowing how their kids compare to kids nationally. So we're also looking at that option to bring that back. So I welcome any questions or comments on that.
Spanish? I, I'm just having a really hard time with a couple of things around the Spanish and the, the going down to one seventh grade teacher. My, my first and foremost is, um, the complete lack of information coming to the board or about it. We weren't asked, uh, nor given an opportunity to discuss and give our opinion. If, if I was to start over, I wouldn't even bring my kids to the school, and I'll say that right up front. Especially if they were forced to take a language. For instance, right now, I'm working with about fifteen Polish kids. I don't need Spanish. I would like to take Polish, Polish, and I'm serious. I'm working with about fifteen Polish kids, right here in town. I, I, I do not understand in a K through eight school why we would say to all of the students that we have that you have to take Spanish. I, you know, there are so many other things, STEM courses, that I think are vitally important. Mathematics being on top of that, which we have done a really poor job over the years. I, I really don't get this, you have to take Spanish thing. And if I was a parent, just to make an issue, I would say, nope, my kid don't have to take Spanish. What are you gonna do about it? I, I just don't get that. I really don't. I'm sorry. I, I really don't understand the, the thought process, and I don't understand how we have degenerated to the point where we're, as a school board, not even asked our opinion on some of this stuff that is coming through.
This was presented to us a month ago, of course.
No, this was not presented. This was told. This is what we're doing.
I think it was presented as a plan, as a plan of what we were thinking of at the time.
It was not.
The language in my report said that we are considering.
We're, we're very fortunate that we have video of, of our meetings, and this was not a proposal. This, this was presented. This is what we're doing.
The written stuff says considering. And I disagree with what you said, Tim. I think it's great that we're taking Spanish. Yes, you're working with fifteen Polish kids right here, but more Americans speak Spanish nowadays than they do American or English or whatever you wanna call it, that the other.
And isn't that sad?
Absolutely, but it's, you know, it's nice that our kids would be able to understand them.
We, we.
So I disagree, and I think it's great.
We in New Hampshire would be far better served with French.
No.
No.
Tim, you're. From Quebec. Oh, you're.
No.
In Spanish.
You are so wrong.
Well, I, that's fine.
You need to leave Northwood a little bit more often.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Head to Manchester.
No.
Manchester has quite a French population, actually.
No, they do not.
Manchester, I need to learn Ethiopian.
Traditional French Canadians came from Manchester.
To work in the mills.
Yep.
Yeah.
My, my point is, is saying to parents and a child, you have to take this language. When they should, if, 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 if they have to take a language, they should be given a choice of languages. I don't think they should have to take a language. I think that. And if we were a bigger school, absolutely. If we had more opportunities, we don't. And I think it's fantastic that.
I believe, does Co Brown require?
With Co Brown, you can take multiple languages, yes.
Is there a requirement for?
You don't know. There is not.
No, there isn't. There isn't college.
For Co Brown, but.
Yeah, and it should be elected here, just like there.
I know, I know in college, at least where I went, there was a, there was a language requirement, so I had to take.
Well, I went to college, but I didn't have to take a language, but that was eight hundred thousand years ago.
Anyone else? Any opinions on this?
I think it's a great idea.
Me too.
Here's, if you talk to parents about it, what kind of feedback you were getting, or was it?
There's a lot of feedback.
Um, we have some concern from parents of seventh graders who are taking Spanish this year and, and how, how do I know that my kids' skills are going to be advanced next year? Um, we are planning on putting out, um, an information letter about all of the changes. We wanted to wait until this discussion at the board meeting before we did that. But we've also heard some positive feedback from parents who were questioning why their kid didn't even have the option of taking Spanish previously. So, I mean, we've heard it from both angles.
That's what I'm wondering about, like, the sixth grade parents whose kids are now going to have to take Spanish.
They already do, in sixth grade.
They do in sixth grade?
They take it as a related art.
As a related art?
Yep, which they will next year.
Which means it's an elective. But what about being, what if they don't have to take it?
They have to take it now. It's not an elective.
It's not an elective.
Part of their normal sixth grade related art rotation.
Okay.
Do you mean the sixth graders now that are going into seventh grade or the upcoming sixth graders?
No, the sixth graders that are gonna become seventh graders who now have to take it as a core course based on this proposal.
So they already took some of it in their related arts. So now they're just taking it as a course, as, uh.
Yeah, I mean.
Instead of doing it once a week, it's once a day, right?
Right. I believe all of my kids took, had Spanish from first grade, you know, they have a related art for that.
Yeah, and I will say that.
It's combined with music for a little while, I think.
You know, it's a little bit of a trade-off in that we're not going to have that exposure for kids in first through fifth grade as we do now. The benefit of that, though, is that it allows Mrs. Bedling to focus. I mean, right now, she is scattered across eight grade levels trying to provide exposure level, um, Spanish instruction. Working with three grade levels that are closer together and, and having a consistent, regular schedule, knowing where her, you know, who her kids are gonna be every day gives her the opportunity to be much more focused and rigorous in her instruction.
But then there's also the drawback that kids in younger grades learn a second language.
I would say they're not learning a language. They're, they're getting exposure to some culture and some basic vocabulary, so.
But they learn it easier.
We don't teach French, do we?
We don't. We don't, do have a few students who opt to take V-Lax French instead of Spanish, and that option will continue.
Hey, field trip.
Your turn.
Hello, everybody. I went on the eighth grade trip.
And he came back.
And he's here to tell them.
Nice of him.
It was fun. We had a good time. I will say that third. You want me, you want me to get closer to the mic here? Okay. Thank you. We got down there a little quicker on Thursday than we anticipated. Uh, once we got down there, we were pretty active, walking the Freedom Trail. We went all over. I don't know if the kids were fully prepared for the amount of walking we did, so they were a little tired by the end of it.
Perfect.
We also ate a little later, so there was, there were some grumbles, a little bit of grumbles, but once we got back to the hotel room, everybody kinda settled down. You know, Friday and Saturday went, you know, the hitch. Kids were great, did an amazing job. We saw a lot of things. Sunday, Sunday, um, little tired. I think they're, they're kinda keeping each other up at night. But once we kinda broke off and saw Salem in different little pods, the kids did a really fantastic job. It was, it was great. Got a lot, got a lot of great feedback from them as well. One of the reoccurring things was that they were, they were tired. They were tired from seeing a lot. But it was enjoyable. I, I personally enjoyed it cause I got to see a different side of the students. I could kinda talk with them at a more personal level. And I really enjoyed that, so I saw a lot of different dynamics as well. So it was a, it was a good time.
Can we talk about your performance at the band concert?
I don't think that was part of the eighth grade trip, nor do I see it in here, so I don't think we do.
I think there's some videos out there.
Wait, do I need to talk about that? Do you want?
We have so many things to talk about. Um, let's go by what's on here first, and then we'll do our extras, so that we don't completely confuse ourselves. So eighth grade advisor, with an S in parentheses, this year we did have two co-advisors. That this year came out of the club line. And originally, or functionally, they were at capped at forty hours per person. Um, I do have time sheets for both of them if anybody wants to look at them, and they both put in seventy hours, so almost double, um, the amount of time that they were paid for. And luckily, they were willing to do that. Pass these around if you like. So, um, I do have two people who are interested in advising next year, but are, one of whom in, in particular, is a little worried about having the same scenario where she's working twice, almost twice as much as she's getting paid for. And also, given that next year, we're likely to, I mean, the, the feedback I'm hearing is that people wanna go back to Washington for the trip, and that I think is going to be more planning than Boston is. So just wanting to put it out there that, you know, if the board could consider upping the hours from forty. You know, what I'm proposing here in the report is seventy, um, which is what they actually did this year. Or something, um, that reflects more what their, what times they're actually putting in.
Oh, I'll make a motion, then we can discuss it. I'll make a, um, motion to up the hours to seventy.
Second.
For the eighth grade advisor.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
I, I do. I think it. Eighth grade, wow, two years ago, um, or, yeah, let's see, last year. There was a lot of hours put in, and there was one individual that put in numerous hours, numerous hours, and didn't account for them. So I think seventy hours is actually too low. I don't know how high we should go, um, but, um, I, I would probably like add another ten, make it eighty hours. Cause it is a lot of work. And, I mean, there's a lot of motivation, um, as you saw, um, with Ms. Breger today, wanting to get started and then throughout the year. So I propose to push it to eighty hours, so.
We're talking about seventy hours right now, though, so.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I think it should be, I know I made a motion and we wanna discuss it because that was, was brought forward, but I do think that it should be even more.
I ask, the thirty-five hundred dollars, is that, I mean, that's beyond what we have budgeted for any of these positions, right?
We don't have anything budgeted for it out of the regular budget, so we would have to over expend a line and underspend on.
On what?
A different line.
Any idea on what that would be?
Um, I'd, no, not, I mean, Dr. Kadomski and I had talked about it. He wasn't concerned that we were not going to be able to do it, but I, I don't know specifically what line he was thinking of.
So I, I don't understand. I'm all in favor of the trips. Historically, the trips have been on the class to pay for. We started chipping in for the advisor a few years back, and it, it's just getting out of hand as far as I'm concerned. What if they decide to go to Japan the following year? And it's two hundred hours. I, I don't, I don't understand. I, I think that, um, what we're doing is more than fair. It's really their trip, they should be paying for the trip. We, we started helping out a little bit, and I'm willing to do that, but again, it's, it's just getting out of hand. Every week or every meeting, we're, we're looking at more and more stipends for, for this kinda thing. And to some point, I'm in favor of that, but where's it going to stop? I, I, you know, forty hours, um, is what the school board has, has been paying, and, and I'm all for that, but I wouldn't vote personally for any more. I, I think if the class trip needs more, then they should supply it, the money for it. And then we'll just get rid of the policy altogether and just leave it up to the parents and the students then. I mean, it just, eh.
Well, we don't have a policy on.
Well, a policy.
On this trip?
Yeah, we do.
On this trip?
It was on a trip, but as advisor, we just, we just discussed it.
The fundraising policy needs an advisor there, so if we don't have an advisor.
And you need to modify it.
From what Tim's saying, it was just, let's get rid of the policy and say, you know what, hey, parents, you wanna raise. Hey, parents, you want to raise money for your kids, go ahead, and you know what? We won't have an advisor to be the liaison between the school and-
That's what he said, though.
I don't think that's what I said either, but to some degree, I agree with what Shane is saying. I mean, it's a class trip to be supported by the students and their parents. I don't mind that we're going to pay forty hours, just like the Maravista trip. That's gone back and forth over the years, if you go back and look, where at one point, we funded it all, and then for several years, the town just got so upset with that, that we didn't fund any of it. And then a suggestion, frankly, I think by me, that we just do half of it, was able to pass in the budget process, and to me, that's fair. You know, and the parents make up the rest, these things are very nice. Class trips are very, very nice, and I totally agree with them. But I think we should help, I don't think it's up to the school board or the taxpayers to supply all of the advisor. That's how I feel, and that's how I'm going to vote. I'm willing to vote for the forty hours and continue that, but I think that something has to be figured out, so that's, that's plenty. It's for just that group, it's not for everybody in town, so everybody in town shouldn't have to pay any, you know, that much for it.
I just have a clarifying question, that thirty-five hundred, is that the grand total for all seventy hours, that's not the increase in thirty hours?
That is, so we're talking about two people at seventy hours, so a hundred and forty hours at twenty-five dollars per hour, so that's the thirty-five hundred, yep.
So even if we brought that down to forty, it would be two thousand, something like that.
Right, two thousand is what you're currently budgeting for, so, yeah.
Well, we don't have it budgeted anywhere.
Well, yes, but what we are planning on coming out of the budget somewhere.
Right, okay, thanks. Any other discussion on this?
I thought it was just twelve fifty. I think that's how we voted for, is a thousand for the eighth grade advisor. And I had it written down on my last one.
About two thousand, so.
It was two thousand?
It's not two thousand.
No, I thought it was twelve fifty, total. And it was an eighth grade advisor, and it was the Maravista advisor, because there was no second, there was no co-advisor at the time when those clubs were brought forward.
Well, there was, we should look up the minutes, because it was also-
No, not on the clubs thing that was brought forward, though.
Yeah.
But Keith, at the time, brought up the seventh grade advisor, and we agreed to a certain amount for the seventh grade. And it seems like it was twelve fifty and seven fifty for two thousand. Twelve fifty for the eighth grade, seven fifty, something like that. And I don't have the minutes with me, but there was an issue when we took it out of the clubs. Then the seventh grade advisor came up, and we agreed with that.
So it was on the clubs, and I think this is how we did it, that's where I got my twelve fifty. For the eighth grade advisor, it was a thousand dollars, and for the Maravista coordinator, it was two fifty.
Okay, but-
And then maybe it was five hundred, though, was it seven fifty?
I don't know, but there was an amount, we agreed to amount, and it was very clear, and one of the people, I forget who stood up in the, in the audience and said, you know, she wanted us, I think it was Miss Dow, really to be sure that we were going to do that, and I think the total was two thousand dollars.
I just have the twelve fifty circled.
Seventh grade advisor.
How much was the seventh grade advisor? I thought it was a thousand just for that.
I didn't think we did a thousand for the seventh grade.
I don't either.
I just have the twelve fifty, that's where I remember circling the twelve fifty on here, and that was the two fifty for Maravista and the eighth grade. So that would have been not the last one, it would have been the meeting before that.
You don't have those with you, do you?
I'm trying to look right now, but-
Barbie, is that your original document that we have with you?
Yeah.
And that's what we agreed upon at that time?
Right, and there was no seventh grade advisor in here, but we, I think, voted on that, but I just don't remember. I want to say it was, was it seven fifty?
I think it was seven fifty and a thousand.
Seven fifty for the seventh grade advisor? Okay, so, that would make the two thousand, yeah. So that would make the two thousand.
And I'm still on board for that.
Do you have something to say?
You look like you do. You're looking at sixteen, seventeen CBA, but the seventeen, eighteen budget.
Anything you want to add to? No.
Possibly. Where, where in your budget, just to help me out, are your club stipends located?
Co-curricular.
Okay, so in your co-curricular, so in your CBA, it says something about a fifteen thousand dollar total club stipend budget, correct?
That is correct, but there were two items in there that really, and so that's, that's why I started the conversation. That aren't clubs. So, the eighth grade advisor is simply, all I said was, that's not a club, why is it in there?
Okay.
Let's take that out and pay it elsewhere, so that they would have that money for clubs.
So what you have, so you have fifteen thousand for clubs and co-curricular, and then you have, you have a total in co-curricular for next year of twenty thousand dollars. I'm just letting you know that.
Some of that is support staff run clubs.
Okay, all right, so that's why.
And I think that's five, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's where that is. So we have to find, we have to find the two thousand that we've said that we're taking out of there, somewhere else in the budget.
And I don't have a problem with, I think we, we all agreed, Dr. Godomsky was here, he agreed that we could find that two thousand. And, and I'm sure we can. And if they want more, this is not the time, as far as I'm concerned, to have that discussion. It should be in the budgeting process, next year. We've already agreed to spending an additional two thousand dollars by taking those out of the clubs and funding them separately.
But they're looking for the money for this year, so.
For next year.
Right. I think the concern is that we're not going to get our advisors, because they're not going to, they don't, they're not going to do it for that amount of money, basically.
And you gotta, you can't compare this year at all to this year, well, for next year, excuse me, because when Mrs. Rush, last year, put in numerous amount of hours, you couldn't even count how many hours she put in to fundraising, I mean, it's over eighty hours. And I feel that this is a perfect amount at a hundred and forty hours for both those at thirty-five hundred dollars, it's, it's a lot of work. And Mrs. Rush was just one of those types of people that just dedicated herself, and you're not going to find that in a lot of, and she's just a different type person, and you're not, and so we need to supplement this.
If you take Ms. Brigger's proposal and shift the burden onto parents, and have them work on that?
And there was so much work, and the reason why, I noticed that my son went-
You're taking some of the burden, some of the advisors, and shifting it to the parents of the PTA.
And if that could work, that would be fantastic, but the amount of work that the parents did, as well as with Mrs. Rush, there was numerous hours that was put in.
And I totally agree with that, but that's their decision. So if your decision is to go to Boston, that's a pretty easy trip.
Fair enough.
If your decision is to go to Washington, and I think the class should go to Washington every year, but it's expensive, it's a lot more work, and that class needs to think about that, that class and those parents need to think about that. And I don't think it's fair to expect the town to fund all of the advisor, if that's what they want to do, so.
Well, there's two things, one, it is, there is more educational value to going to Washington than there is to Boston, so I think it's something the school board should be encouraging, number one. Number two, number two, it's not, we're not asking for additional money for this, this is money that's going to come out of something else. We're going to have to cut back on whatever, you know, buy less technology, or do something else, it's, we're not, we're not debating a funding thing here, we're debating shifting money from one part of the budget to another part of the budget. Right?
We don't yet know exactly what we're proposing to cut.
Right, yep, yep.
There's so much that can happen in a year, you know, again, I'm just telling you how I'm going to vote. I am very much in favor of the two thousand dollars, and voted for that. And I'm pleased that I did, but I'm not going to vote for a penny more. I think that the class needs to have a serious discussion with itself, and the, and the parents that are involved, and figure it out. That's my opinion, I, 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 I don't know.
Right. Any further discussion? Well, sorry, since our piece, so the motion is to approve thirty-five, up to thirty-five hundred dollars for two eighth grade advisors for seventy hours of work each, correct? I'm on board here, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion fails. Three. I believe we already have the two thousand, we did vote the two thousand, so that's what I'm saying.
We did vote for the two thousand, absolutely. And maybe somebody should check, but I think Barbie and I have it right, that it's a thousand, two fifty, and seven fifty. A thousand for-
Eighth grade.
Eighth grade, seven fifty for seventh grade, and two fifty for Maravista. That's my recollection.
Okay, moving on.
So, can I just ask a question moving forward? So I had been working off of the fact that we have two advisors each working forty hours this year, and that was tough, a tough sell. I'm going to have a really tough sell convincing one person to do it for forty hours next year.
What are your new seventh grade advisor for?
So I'm just, would the board be open to a different, like, proposal? Not this much, but something else?
Yeah, if you want, if you want to go to Washington, D.C., you ain't going to do it with forty hours, I'm sorry, they ain't going to happen. So, yeah, I would definitely recommend a different proposal.
Yeah, my husband took them, he did it for free.
Yeah, well, some people are dedicated like that, but-
Well, volunteers, you need more volunteers, there are people out there who will do it. Ms. Brigger's proposal is only one of many opportunities.
But it's not the, excuse me, it's not the volunteers that are with, with, it's, it's that liaison, that's that connection, that community, the connection between the school and the parents and the students, you need that. And, and if it's already a tough sell, I mean, yeah, hey, more power to you, Ms. Young, to try to push this for forty hours, and I hope you get it, but I think that it would be a lot better if there was a little bit more incentive, because, I mean, being a teacher in school, it's just-
I think Tim is understanding of that point, the point is that he thinks that the class should raise that money itself. If you want to have seventy hours or eighty hours-
It's not like the advisor's raising the money, they are, they are advising that communication, that relationship.
Use some of that money that they are raising to fund those extra hours, I think that's the point.
There's this list of fundraisers that we have here, is now that advisor is going to these and putting in hours, and they're going to be putting in more than the seventy hours, I guarantee it, they already know that. So if you're telling that person you have forty hours, they know they're putting in already seventy hours plus, and only getting paid for forty, it's just completely unfair.
That's not, you're still not understanding the point, I don't think. He's saying, if you want to pay them for seventy hours or eighty hours, let the school board pay their forty hours that they agreed to, and then fund the rest out of whatever the class raises.
Take away from the kids.
That's money from kids.
Yeah, it's money away from kids.
So is it taking it out of the budget?
So Ms. Young's going to come back with a, maybe another proposal at some point, so we will look forward to that, and we should just move on for now.
Fair enough.
Okay, the next item, Adrian and I both have in our contracts attendance at a national principals conference with expenses to be negotiated with the school board, so I have a proposal here of a conference in July in Philadelphia that we would both like to attend. We have some sample, or examples of some of the different types of sessions that will be offered that pertain to our improvement initiatives that we're currently undertaking. I also provided a estimated cost breakdown, and I'm looking for, I guess, approval for that, or negotiation, I don't really know how it works.
Well, is that what your contract says, is that you have to negotiate this with the school board?
Why, let me read it to you.
So, this is an issue I brought up to the school board last year.
I want to know what our contract says, though, between-
Oh, it says just what she says.
One national conference per year, expenses as negotiated with the school board.
So as negotiated, that doesn't mean what they put in, what we put in to the budget? That's what I mean, is like, there's, there's a line in the budget for this stuff.
Sure, two.
How, how much is?
For them.
I think we should fundraise for it.
There's six thousand dollars in the staff development line, and the principal line, and there's five hundred travel.
Right, and well, I guess that's what, what I'm saying is, I'm not saying no to this, I'm saying why does, negotiating, to me, is, we put it in the budget, why does, why do they even have to bring it to us?
And maybe we just agree on that they're going to a proper leadership conference, that's not going to a-
I think the negotiation thing is-
Well, I, to me, I, I don't understand what you don't understand. And I wish that I had the assortment of invoices from two years ago, so I could show you what I was talking about, but I don't, and I'm not going to ask Marjorie to go back and get them. I was appalled, which is far more than this, at how much was expended at that time, and we weren't even informed, and it was in their contract, in that person's contract at the time. And we're not in public, we're not in non-public, so I'm not going to go any further than that. So I asked, which is why this is coming to us, and Dr. Godomsky knows that I've been waiting for this, that we be informed, as per the contract, of how much they're going to spend. And I'm tickled to death that I now know, and now I can, with no reservations, approve it. But we have the right to say yes or no, because it's in their contract.
Is that what the negotiate means? I mean, to me, we negotiated the contract.
You, you, read the contract, it's very clear to me. The amount of money that they're going to spend to go on this trip is negotiable. We could say, wait a minute, we're not going to spend that much, we want to drop it back to a hundred dollars. I have no desire to do that, I just simply want to know how much it's going to expend, because I don't like surprises. That's all, so now we know.
A motion to approve one thousand seven hundred and twenty-five times two, which is three thousand four fifty?
And this is out of the seventeen, eighteen?
Three thousand four fifty.
Correct.
It is.
Yeah.
Yes.
For the two thousand seventeen, eighteen season.
Which is less than one person spent a couple of years ago.
That's a moot point.
Yep.
Do you have a second?
Yes, second.
Any discussion on this particular topic? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, motion carries.
All right, and I do have- I do have a few more things that have come up since I put the written report together. So one thing that came up this summer, we are offering the STEM program funded through Title I. I had a parent of a student who's attending it reach out and ask if there had been any projects or activities that we had not been able to fund through Title I, and if so, he was willing to ask his company to make a corporate donation. We wrote a proposal, and his company issued a check to us for five hundred dollars, so I am hoping for board approval for that, Adrian can fill you in on what the activity would be.
Reset.
Speak into the mic.
Guess that's what my conference is going to help me with. So I reached out to Krista McCalliff Planetarium, and they have a, lack of a better term, a mobile planetarium. And so that will be coming down here with the money, it funds sixty to eighty minutes of a program, and that covers travel back and forth, and I, I can remember having a mobile planetarium in my school, and I loved it. And so I figured that'd be a great thing to use for summer STEM.
So I think in past years, they've done this and had a telescope outside, where they go, the kids, like, you know, the kids break into two groups, and some will go to the planetarium, and some go do the telescope to look at the moon, or whatever's out there at the time, is that in the plan as well, I'm just curious?
I don't know about the telescope, per se, but there is four different things that they could select from, that they would kind of go in the planetarium. There may be a Hubble telescope, I'm not really sure.
I think it's only if they do it at night, though.
It was done at night, if I-
Yeah, this one, I don't know if they do it during the day.
This would be during the day, like, the morning, actually.
Look at the sun.
We could still look at the sun, yeah.
It brought the, yes, we could do that, but- Or they could just look at the balls that are stuck in the gym, I mean, but that was what we planned to use the money for.
Motion to approve the five hundred dollar donation from, who's it from, do we? Phase Two Medical, and Bill Mello is the parent who made the offer.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion on this?
It would be used for the- It'll be used for the planetarium. Is it? Sorry. That was, finish the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And then, one more thing that needs approval. Two telephone poles mysteriously appeared in our upper field a few weeks ago, and looking like it was the beginning of a sign, and Mr. Tom had no idea what this was, asked me about it, I asked Dr. Gudomski, nobody seemed to know. Turns out that about a year ago, there was some discussion about the Softball Baseball Association placing a scoreboard there. My understanding is that it never fully got through the approval of the school board phase. I have a letter here for you from Chad Pousha, who is sort of the spokesman for the group. The, the work has been donated, the scoreboard has been donated, so he, you know, all of the safety precautions have been taken in terms of calling dig safe. So, he is asking for the board to complete the approval process for the scoreboard.
I motion to approve the new school board as so written here by Chad Pousha.
Second.
Any discussion on this?
Can we have a minute to read this?
Yeah, I'd just like to point out, just for the record, that Northwood Family Dental was the one that donated the scoreboard to us last year. I think we've had it for quite some time.
We've had it here for over a year now.
Hasn't been installed yet. Thank you very much to them.
The only thing in here is that it does say, you know, in the future, Northwood Family Dental would like to donate other things. I don't want to make this like a whole, we're just gonna approve anything that comes through, 'cause we'll have to, you know, as long as he understands that we have to approve everything that comes through per the policy.
So, let's clarify that this motion is to approve the installation of the donated scoreboard.
Scoreboard, yeah.
Does that work for you, Kate?
Who's gonna pay for the upkeep?
No.
Thank you, Barbie. For listening to me.
I was listening.
That will probably, we'll probably have to work that out with NSBA.
Yeah, 'cause it's not in our, it's not in our, well, it shouldn't, I wouldn't think anything would need to be done next year, but we'll have to look for it in the seventeen.
I believe NSBA pays for...
Eighteen, nineteen.
I mean, they do the upkeep for the, like, the snack shack, and they pay for the electricity and all that stuff, so I...
But they're also looking at the other fields in town, too, so...
That's true, right, right.
Just so that we know, so that we can budget for it, that's all.
I think, I don't think it's gonna be an issue, I think the NSBA does a lot that, for these fields, 'cause the, you know, the time's donated, so...
No, it's just that they made it clear last year, I believe it was, that they're also looking at, you know, not being here all the time, and, and this is great, but we need to make sure that we know so that we can budget for it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. All right, I will let him know, and then we have two more cool things that Mr. Alfred is going to tell you about, and then we will be able to stop talking. Sorry, this, I think, is perhaps my record for principals' report.
Not the school's record.
We still haven't done anything about the, the smart board, though.
Right, yes. So, there's a bunch of things that I'm waiting for final word on. This is so cool, where did I see it? I saw it somewhere. It's been on a picture. I saw a picture, oh, Facebook, Facebook.
So, this is the end product of the artist in residence. So, what you see is, is the little, if you can get it, is all the pictures. So, students got to make their own individual little booklets, and they had to find shapes outside that would spell their names. And so, she took all the pictures and made it into a bigger collage of artwork.
So, this was a painting painted by sixth graders originally, that they then took that image to create the mosaic, so it's, it's kind of layers of sixth graders' artwork.
That's very cool.
Where are we gonna hang it?
It's going in the lobby, right, next to the gym.
We got to rehang it.
Nice job, Vanna.
Just like folding sheets.
That's very cool.
Thank you, too. What's her name, Nancy?
Nancy Graceport.
We also, if anybody has occasion to walk through the main office, Life Touch did a similar thing, a mosaic of all of our spring kids' pictures, to make the lake monster. So, that's hanging in the main office, and that's pretty cool.
The lake monster.
All right, and then you have one more thing to talk about.
So, as you, I think we told you earlier, we did purchase a 3D printer, and that was with the hopes of, obviously, getting more of the engineering piece of it. So, Mr. Robert has been working with sixth grade, and I kind of wanted them to create the school by using the, the 3D printer. So, I'm gonna hand around what a couple of the sixth grade groups have been working on. So, they've been using a program called Tinkercad, which is obviously the cat program, to create a 3D image of the school that we're gonna be printing out soon. So, I just wanted to give you two pictures of some of the plans that they created using Tinkercad in order to print on a 3D printer. So...
Like CAD for elementary kids?
Uh, yeah, essentially. I mean, it, the, the program goes well with the, with the 3D printer. So, we're gonna be incorporating it more, obviously, in other classrooms and whatnot, and into the art, try to fit it into tomorrow's project as well, so. Pretty cool.
Great, that's all we have, and I guess the smart board purchase is the only thing that I'm still waiting for approval of. So, motion to approve four thousand dollars for a new smart board, and this includes the installation and all of that, if I remember correctly.
Second.
A motion to approve four thousand dollars for the new smart board.
Purchase and installation.
Includes installation and everything for the kindergarten room. I guess, like, do I have to make the motion that it's overspending the line? No, it's just that, make the motion, okay.
I'll second that. Any discussion on that? This is basically out of the surplus of this year, is the plan?
The technology.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Did you want an approval for the summer curriculum work as well?
I don't know that you will have, I think you'll have stipends at some point.
Okay.
So, I don't know, that was really more informative than requiring approval, I believe.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get the nominations, and when the people get, all right, great. Anyone have any other questions?
Oh, comment? A whole weeks ago, I went to the fourth graders' art presentation at Chesley Memorial Library and saw their interpretations of Robert Frost and their Robert Frost-like poems. I've never seen so many references to clouds and reflections. It was great, very Robert Frost-esque, so I just wanted to compliment the fourth graders on that. Well done.
Thank you. I will let him know.
Okay. Move on to the enrollment report, is there anything interesting for us?
Enrollment reports on page thirty-eight to forty. On page thirty-nine, you have two less students than you had the previous month, and your co-browne enrollment is static from April to May.
Any questions about the enrollment report?
I saw the letter regarding the student that we agreed to let go to school until the end of the year. Has there been any other back and forth?
Other than the letter in the packet?
Yes.
No. Not yet.
Thank you.
Okay. Move into policies, we have some policies starting at page forty-two.
Motion to approve policy DM, EBBC, JLCE, EBBC dash R, and JLCE EBBC.
Force code.
Can I make a request that you amend your motion to separate the first policy from the rest?
I motion, I amend my motion to take out policy DM.
We have a slight modification.
Okay, so, we'll start with policy EBBC?
Yeah.
And so on?
So, I'll give you the process. Bree Jocelyn and I met and learned some great medical information via the internet about the policies. We had a good educational session about things we knew nothing about, and decided that these policies were best to be worked and evaluated by the school nurse. She did that, and that's what's in your packet.
Perfect.
Any discussion on these? Any other discussions you should say? All right, all in favor to move these to a second reading?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Then if we go back to policy DM...
I'll make a motion to move that to second reading.
DM.
Policy DM.
A second.
So, if you look under enumeration two, where it starts with head secretary, run down to bullet number four, where it says verify, it should say verify the amount and notify the administration that a deposit needs to be made, and then the next bullet after, secure the money until a deposit is made. And that deposit will be made by the office staff. Is that correct, Carrie?
Correct.
What was the motivation for doing this one?
Well, we had changed it, and the edits didn't get done, and the motivation was, you don't have a school bookkeeper anymore. The other motivation, and the other motivation was, I believe, this one came from you originally, right?
I think so.
Yeah.
Just to make sure that we have a cash handle.
It was a recommendation to modify the policy by the business administrator as part of the audit, I think. Yeah.
That's where that came from.
All right, thanks. Any discussion on this?
I just have a non-public question on it, so...
A non-public question on this?
Yeah, there's something I don't want to...
Yeah, we will have a non-public session, so we can, we can bring that up then. All in favor, moving this to second reading?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay. I think that takes care of our policies for tonight.
On page, I have two personnel reports, the first is on page fifty-five. The second is somewhere.
Thank you.
Do you have enough? Stipends, thank you for the information.
Okay.
Can I ask a question on the stipends, or? I was just looking at the stipends, and I don't know if, but on the, the... Standout that I have, yeah, for the gardening club, for Jen, it does have Ms. Lenharth here. It has seven fifty, but on the stipends here, it's five hundred. I didn't know what, that's what I was checking off here to see. So, I didn't know if something had changed, or, Ms. Dow, do you know? I'm sorry. So, on our, our club's one for Ms. Lenharth, for gardening, it had seven fifty. In the stipends here, it's five hundred. Did something change that you know of?
I could just be a goof. I filled out about forty-five of these at once, so...
My phone just died, so I can't look at it.
I can pull it up.
Okay.
So, why don't we, why don't we do this? We can approve the five hundred today, and if there's a correction needed, we can address that.
I guess the stipends are really just...
Information.
Informational anyways, but I just want to make sure that, you know, that the information that's, is out there is correct.
I'm trying to remember if I had a conversation with Jen, because, because she said, I really didn't do that many hours.
Okay.
It is five hundred on here.
Okay, so, it may have been a difference of five hours, but it just went somewhere else.
Okay, and that's fine, I just want to make sure that we're...
Is there six hundred and seventy-five dollars or six hundred and twenty-five dollars left?
Yep, six twenty-five is left.
Still allotted, because we can tell those advisors are physicians, so they're gonna use that cover next year, once you use that, they still can.
Okay. Would you like to make a nomination?
Yep. I'll nominate Ashlyn Martino as the PE health teacher for a salary of thirty-eight thousand five hundred and twenty-two.
So, move.
You collect? Second? I'll second that. Any discussion on this?
I think that will be the answer.
I have a question. Can I get some clarification on the salary being offered, more than the last teacher? Because she doesn't have any job experience at all, based on this resume. She was an intern. I'm just curious.
Right, and she's placed master's degree one?
Okay. And that pay scale changed, and that's why it's more now? Is that what you're saying?
Well, the previous employee could have been a bachelor's degree, but I can...
But also, if you remember, we did away with the zero step, and I think that's going to be the answer.
Is that why? Okay, I was just curious.
If you give me two seconds, I can check step placement.
I, I think it's, part of it is that we took away that zero step.
And she has a master.
Eighteen?
Thirty-eight, five, two, two.
Thirty-eight, five, two, two. That's correct.
Okay.
What does that, masters, step zero?
Masters one. B thirty-five or MAM one?
Because there is no step two.
Because there is no zero anymore.
Right, where she should be.
Yep. Any other questions or discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, let me get this back in here in a second. That's good for me.
Really?
Well, for the superintendent's report. I have other stuff.
Yes, we can deal with that later.
Can I ask one more question on the stipends?
Yes, it's time.
Is this just the ones that have, like, turned something into you, that's why? Okay.
Thank you. Yep, I issued them all, and then they have to sign them and get them back to me, and that happens sporadically.
Just want to make sure. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Ruining on the superintendent's report before we move on? Nope. Okay, we'll move on to committee reports. Do we have any committee meetings the past two weeks?
No.
Policy committee met today, and we'll have some drug policies to present to you at the next meeting.
Okay. Sounds good. The strategic planning committee did meet again. Mostly, we worked on putting together a survey for the community and for students, which hopefully we've seen advertising for out there. I just wrote something into the paper today. So...
The link's up on the SAU website.
Oh.
Link is on the SAU website. I'll say that, for anyone who might be watching, the link is tiny URL, shoot. I, I had it. Northwood, New Hampshire, or something like that. Find it, give me one second.
It's on Facebook.
It's on Facebook.
It will also be posted to the town website tomorrow.
Great.
Can you twit it? Or tweet it?
I would rather tweet it.
So, so, URL is HTTPS colon slash slash tinyURL dot com slash Northwood NH. So, if anybody wants to do that. I believe we were going, going to look into handing out paper copies, and I think people can come to the SAU and get a paper copy and just fill it out and turn it into library, or...
There's also a hundred copies in the office for anybody who wants to...
Actually, the paper copies aren't at the SAU, the paper copies are here.
Are here, okay.
Either people can come pick them up, or the actual strategic planning committee members are gonna come and grab some and distribute those to...
Anything I missed? We have a lot of strategic planning people here.
Yeah, and the last day to take the. Survey.
July sixth.
July. Well, I think it's done the fourth.
Yeah.
But then the committee members have until the seventh to get them to the S A U.
To turn them into, yeah, exactly.
We'll be inputting the data from the paper copies in the seventh.
Okay, any other committees? Facilities committee? No? Budget committee?
Meeting in July.
July.
End of July. Twenty, I don't know what's on.
Twenty. Oh, I think there was.
They wanted it by the twenty-sixth, right?
Meeting the twentieth? Does that sound, nope, maybe I'm wrong.
I thought they said they needed something by certain date. Because they're meeting on the twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh.
Yeah, so it's got to go out like.
For the budget committee?
Twenty-sixth is the date, twenty-sixth.
The education committee did have one meeting. We had a student hearing and worked on.
July the sixteenth.
We did, we did an interview for a social studies teacher, I believe. Okay, old business. Steps repair, we've taken care of. Food service contract.
So you, I believe, from what I'm hearing, you were given a copy of the food service contract last time? There was some adjustment needed to be made because of the lunch price changes, is correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Do we need to make a motion to authorize the administration to sign this?
Yes, must assign it.
I make a motion to authorize the board chair to sign the contract for the food service bid from Fresh Picks for 2017-18.
Any discussion on this?
Could you read into the motion that last line that says what we'd be liable for?
You want me to read this?
Twenty-nine hundred.
Oh. We're liable for two thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Second.
Yes.
Or somebody else seconded it?
We're seconded. We're good.
Somebody, pick one. Doesn't matter.
No, I just wanted to make sure that the extra copies I had in here are the same copies in the packet to make sure there wasn't an update, so we're good.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There's five zero. Moving on to our parking lot items.
Could I bring up two items before you go any further?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I should have brought these up. I had made notes and then got way late. Number one, somewhere along the line, we got off where the Laker was to be emailed to the board members. Because there are a couple of us at least that don't have kids, so we don't get to see the Laker unless it comes to us via email. So I'm wondering if we could get back to that. I would like to see the Laker.
Sure, I was under the impression you all got the One Call Now emails. Are you not getting those?
I don't get that.
We did some of them, not all of them.
Yeah, so I don't know how we were informed about the bus accident.
Bob emailed the board.
We didn't get anything about the bus accident.
I didn't get anything about the bus accident.
I did from around.
So, so I, I'm, I.
So one thing.
But I'm talking specific to, we had made a motion back a couple of years that because of some of us not having children in school at this time, the Laker would be emailed to all of us, but I would certainly like to have it. I don't want the rest of you. So that we could get a copy of it and go through it.
So one thing to look into, I know Mr. Robert set up email addresses, district email addresses for all of us board members.
Oh, I don't know anything about that.
Right, it could be that we didn't talk to him and maybe, maybe the emails are going there instead of your preferred email address.
I'm not using that. I'd prefer it come to me personally if possible.
But you can also set that up to forward it to you as well, so maybe we should.
Maybe you can't, I can't.
We can help you with that.
It will forward it to all of us.
So that was one thing.
Just take care of that for me. That would be great.
We may have to talk to Steve, so maybe, maybe that's what's happening to some of these things.
I don't, I don't know, but I, I just would like to be able to see the Laker, and I'm interested.
While we're on that subject of notifying board members about things, how do I get off the phone? The automatic phone calls? Because I don't have children in the school, so I don't need to know when school is delayed two hours for snow. It doesn't apply to me.
It's like a free wake-up call.
It's like five AM, Jocelyn. It's killing me.
Don't want to wake up to my phone?
I do like, I did like your voting one. That was great. That was a good one.
You can get up by seven o'clock.
You could get up at five.
I get up at six. That's, that's good enough. But yeah, I would love to get the Laker. That would be great, but I don't need to. Oh, stop it.
So I will ask Mr. Robert to remove you, and I will ask him to make sure that the, do you want all One Call Now emails to go to the board? Do you just want the Laker?
I don't understand what, why you're asking about the Laker. I want the Laker via email.
That's what she's saying.
That's what I do. I send out a One Call Now that emails everybody.
And I Call Now is the same. It's not just the phone, it's the email.
You're going to know about the bus accident. You're going to know about if there's an emergency event.
I want all of it. There's a bus accident, I would like to know about it, and I don't mind getting up at five o'clock.
Yeah, you'll know softball practice got canceled. You'll know that Shane stubbed his toe.
I say I mind that. I find that annoying.
I don't want to lose the others.
Yeah, I would just be happy with the Laker myself. If we have to have all the same, I mean, I'll suffer, but if I can choose to only get the Laker, that would be great.
Okay, and meanwhile, if you wish to read any past additions, they're all on the website. Happy reading.
So the other question I had. In special education, if someone comes into our town from another school district, for whatever reason, we can build back to the other school district if the parents live there. Do you know what I'm saying?
I know what you're saying.
Okay, and so I'm wondering.
But I'm wondering if we can have a conversation not public because there's a lot of.
Well, I'm just wondering, not anybody specific, I'm just wondering, in regular education, does that work also?
Only, oh, yeah, well, okay, so if a student's foster-placed or placed by the court in a home in Northwood, Nottingham or Stratford. Um, yep, Northwood, Nottingham, Stratford. You're right, they're responsible for the special education, not the transportation, but the special education cost, and we build a district back. You're in a unique situation because you don't have a high school. So because you don't have a high school, that sending district for regular education is responsible to pay the tuition to Co-Brown.
But not K through eight?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. But you understand what I'm asking.
I'm well-versed and fluid in it, yep. Yeah, because if you remember, way back when, remember the student, the foster-placed student that hadn't been billed for years?
Yeah.
That was a situation where it was a general education student who was foster-placed in town and went to Co-Brown, and nobody ever read the RSA in detail enough to understand that the sending district was responsible for that year.
So any questions, Tim?
That was it.
Okay, thanks. Moving on to the parking lot, we have our C I P plan, I see is noted on our future agenda. A little meeting with Sluckman, figure that out still. The advisors, we already talked about. I don't know what Maro Vista is on here for. Do you guys remember what? What the discussion was supposed to be for Maro Vista on our.
No.
Tim, do you? Another advisor.
Oh, Maro Vista advisor, that's what it is. It's with the advisors.
Oh.
Maro Vista advisor.
Well, we have the nomin, oh, does she have to fill out the paperwork or, oh, okay.
Alright, so we'll, we'll address that soon.
And then I added public on hallway steps in September and front entryway in September go out to bid.
Excellent. Our school board timeline starts on page sixty. Looking at June. June is on page sixty-one of Autumn.
Oh, okay.
He keeps going.
We've had almost all this except for exit interviews. Are we doing exit interviews?
They're voluntary out there.
Well, I don't know if you are.
I don't either.
H R is.
I answered that last time.
Do they have the policy here? Okay.
Yeah, H R does, but they're voluntary. Like, they can come in and do them.
Yeah, we can.
Linda doesn't.
Alright, so.
I can't remember her name. What's her?
Linda.
Linda doesn't. She reaches out to them, and then if they want to come in, they can come in, but it's not like we can make them.
Right, right, okay. I think it'd be great to see some of that data at some point if we could do, once, once that's done.
You got it.
I think we got a report last year or the year before. Yeah, I think it's been a couple of years. Yeah, maybe it was my first year. I can't remember.
Set future agenda items. Right now, for our next meeting on the sixth, I have hopefully a legal update about using Laker gear for a fundraiser.
Yep.
Where's the scrubber going? Can we put it on Craigslist?
Okay. Any other things we will put on the agenda for? Our next meeting? Is there anything? I mean, with such a low agenda, I wonder if over the summer, if we maybe should consider canceling the meeting and just picking up on the twentieth.
Do you still have hires coming? Again, similar situation to the other night. You've still got, how many? Well, one, two.
Three for sure.
Maybe a custodian.
You've still got three professional?
Two classroom teachers and one summer position.
Coming, so, I mean, the summer position is going to start on July sixth, right?
And.
Ten. So you have some choices to make, just similar to the ones you can authorize the superintendent to proceed with hiring, then just present the information in a later meeting. But if you have nominations, you'll want to get those done. You'll want to get your nominations done as soon as you can, which would be at the July.
I'd just like to point out too, Jocelyn, I don't know if you've read our July school board responsibilities, but discuss school schedule, K through eight with school board, and the presentation and discussion of staff and students and parent handbooks are there, just, just as an FYI.
The other things I see is we do have our board goals, and Dr. Grobsey's going to have his feedback on that. And the C I P update. That was the deadline for everybody getting in all that information to us, so.
The information, just so you know, the information's been collected. I think I got it last Friday.
Your C I P?
Your CIP, so you're all set to go.
Alright.
So future meetings, the eighteenth meeting, is it?
Twentieth.
Twentieth. I will not be here just to let people. Go on vacation.
Alright, anything else? Anybody wants to add for our agenda for next?
Joint board meeting on July twenty-fourth is canceled, so that's.
You noted that? Yep, thank you. Okay, future meetings, we do have a, we will do a July sixth meeting followed by July twentieth meeting, and then our next joint board will probably won't be till August, late August. So any closing public comment?
Yeah, I, I would just like to say that I feel like you've created an absolute lose-lose situation all around. It's really discouraging to be a parent and to want to be involved and to want to help and support the advisors, advisor, teachers, whoever it is, and, and be discouraged from doing so per the policy. It's also discouraging for teachers to want to be involved and to want to step up and do more because of the stipulations that are put on them and the discussion and the, the lack of support. So the teachers lose, the kids lose, the parents lose. I don't, I don't know who is coming out on top in this situation when job and the goal of administration and school board should be to ensure the best education and experience we can for our kids, and I think everybody has lost in this situation. I just would also like to point out that there was no issue approving, what is it, thirty-four hundred dollars in change to approve administration to, to Philadelphia for a conference, but yet we can't do something to benefit our kids in a, in a really tangible sort of way. There's fifteen thousand dollars in the staff budget for clubs. There is five thousand more than that in the co-curricular line. I don't understand how that line would have more money and that we can't spare some money from that to fund this advisor. Based on what Jocelyn said, it sounds like we may not have any advisor now based on this decision. And you have also voted to not allow us as a parent group to move forward with any of our fundraising pending the placement of an advisor. So no one, no one is winning in this situation. And I would really ask that you reconsider your decision to have a seventh grade advisor, because honestly, if we can't help support the eighth grade class, I'm not sure what the purpose and intent of a seventh grade advisor is. There isn't one now for the seventh grade class. There wasn't one all year. I think maybe you could reconsider and do something to help these kids now.
Thanks. Any else?
So I guess just to piggyback on that, to, for someone who's very active in this community, who's very active in this school, who does a lot with, on committees and clubs. I personally feel like if I was the person, it's my own personal feeling, to go on this eighth grade trip and do fundraising or be an advisor, you also have to consider, we all have personal lives too. Would I give up my time to be with the eighth grade? I would, but not at the cost of my family. And so, and doing other things. And I give kudos to Ms. Rush, who was here, Shane, because you are right. She put, when she filled out those club forms, she would put over a hundred and fifty hours, like, on her form. But a hundred and fifty hours is what, three thousand something dollars? That would come out of the fifteen thousand dollars, which, not only that, that was for eighth grade advisor, but she also did that for drama. So like, that is a huge portion of money and hours that she did commit, so I commend her and commend you for bringing that up, so thank you. So that's just one piece that I wanted to refer to as an opinion myself. I'd be willing to do that position if I was compensated for my time. On another note, I wanted to respect the board and myself. I am no longer the president of the union. I did give that up for my own professional reasons and my own personal reasons, but it's been a pleasure. It's been a pleasure negotiating with the board, and I am going to use myself in a different capacity at the strategic planning committee and other things in the school to continue to better this school, so thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Any other public comment? Any board members like to take this opportunity to comment?
I would just like to clarify the fifteen and twenty thousand dollar figures. The, we have fifteen thousand dollars in our CBA with the teachers, fifteen thousand. We have five thousand in our CBA with the support staff. That is the total of the twenty thousand in the budget. It's not that there's an extra five thousand there. There's not. We, as a board, approved taking the advisors out of the CBA club agreement, allowing for more money to be sent on clubs, and we would fund those two positions elsewhere in the budget. And I think that was very commendable of us to do that, but there's not an extra five thousand dollars anywhere. It's, the, the support staff also has stipends for their clubs, and that's the other five thousand dollars. Thank you.
I would just like to piggyback on that, and I, I'm glad that we did that, that we took, we found extra money for the advisors, but we also took in consideration, and we took those people that dedicated their time to do the eighth grade field trip as, as granted. We, you know, we took them in, so it's. We advised that two thousand dollars because we knew that there was someone dedicated. There's that, that, we don't have that now. And it needs to go up, and I would love to reconsider it to raise that money up to the thirty-five hundred dollars if the board wishes.
Thank you. Any other board members? We will close the public comment session. I do believe we have to, we do have need to go into a non-public session under RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, part two, under the subtitles B, C, and E.
At school bus.
Yes. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Want the roll call in on that? Mr. Wells? Mr. Wiggery, yes, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Jandiver, yes?
Yes.
We're going to non-public now. A letter from a. From one, I can't read the name. Deidre.
You're going to say a firm of parent.
A parent. To request that their son be allowed to attend Concord Regional Tech Center construction trades.
So moved, as long as the tuition does not exceed the tuition that we would pay to Co-Brown. Second.
Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, the other thing I forgot. Sorry, the other thing I forgot is that we do want to seal the minutes, so is our motion to seal the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Seal the non-public minutes until?
Until July first.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
I believe that concludes our business.
July first.
To adjourn?
Second.
All in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
We are adjourning.